I hope you are.
I always say, I looked up here to figure out where I sat. What we do.
That's right. I look at these things every time.
Sorry to keep the board waiting. We had a long DSS meetings.
Heard about. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Alfred.
Appreciate y'all's patience.
Thank you for being patient.
Okay. See if I, ready to the right, to the, to the left. Okay. Phones off. Let's see here.
Thank you.
Did he? They've talked them, those are resolutions? Have you put them up?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Commissioner McClure and Commissioner Elliott have their hard copy and the soft copy.
All right. Let's see. Okay.
I guess that's yours there, Don.
Okay. I'd call the February 28th, Monday evening, meeting to order and make with our apologies for running a little bit over. We had a prior meeting that took place right before this and then ran out a little over. So thank you for your patience. If you, those who would like to, if you bow your head. Our most gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity, Father, to come together as a free people. Father, tonight, I want to ask you to help the people across the world, those in Ukraine. And it's devastating to the flesh, Father, but it's not anything you hadn't ever seen. And so therefore, Father, we know that you know and how on these matters and our trust is in you and not in the flesh. We call upon your wisdom, Father, your strength and your guidance to help this board make decisions that will enhance the lives of all of our citizens. We thank you, Father, for this. In his precious name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance, if you stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I noticed a lot of folks sort of looking around like, what are you pledging to us for? We purposely put a flag at the back so we wouldn't turn our backs to you when we were doing the pledge and that way you'd have a flag here and we'd have a flag back there. Okay. I want to recognize, is Darren Cecil, Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Darren, if I can, and Lillian. Come on forward. Y'all come on to the podium. I love when we get something we can share with the board of on the good job our folks do. Darren Cecil's got nominated a year behind causes of COVID for the 2020 Supervisor of the Year Award for the North Carolina Supervisors Environmental Health Association. So I've got a flag here. I didn't even know Darren's even aware of it. So I'm gonna bring this up and then the board can have any. So.
And we like to.
Congratulations there, Darren.
Good job, sir.
This is the Supervisors Association for all of North Carolina environmental health. So it's a competitive field. As Casey said, it's from 2020, but due to the COVID pandemic, they put the first event off and then Darren was gone for a little while. So we held the surprise as long as we could. But this is just a phenomenal honor for a phenomenal man. Anybody that's worked with Darren knows how wonderful he is. Almost 30 years with the county and we're just so thankful to have him. So this is really special for our entire department and really special for Darren. And his wife is here tonight with him too.
Awesome. Fantastic.
Where's his wife? Bring her up. Yeah. Come on up here.
Let me tell you, let me tell you something. When I go home from a commissioners meeting, this is all streaming. When I reach for the door handle, I say, do I want to open this door or not? Because she's gonna lay into me if she, if something she didn't like. So I know how important the wife is in supporting someone who has a job such as yours, sir. And we want to thank both of you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
Congratulations.
One, one second. Don?
I just want to say one thing too. I, I work closely with Darren in the health department. And Darren's in charge of the environmental health, but there's, I believe over the past number of years, you've done about everything in the health department, even as a health director. You've done it all. And I see that the employees there in the health department just as here tonight, they look, look to you for guidance and we do appreciate everything you have done for us. We really do. And I'm sure because Lillian has even told me before how much she depends on you too. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good job.
There's a man few words. Really, I don't. I mean, I just, you know, I do what I do.
You go away.
Awards, awards are nice, but you know, it's the relationship that you build and people you can deal with and try and treat people like you want to be treated to really, really make the one, make the difference. So.
Yeah, that's right.
That's the difference. You're right. Thank you.
David, make sure my glasses are straight. You know, I got one ear lower than the other.
What if you take a couple with Darren and then have Lillian and his wife get in?
Yes.
One, two, three. Do one more. One, two, three.
Lillian walks about like a worm.
One, two, three. Do one more. One, two, three.
Good job, buddy.
Good job.
Is Hal Ruth here? I've looked and I don't see Hal.
Not see him coming.
He may be, he may be streaming. You know, a lot of people are still doing that. Hal is the representative of Lexington Area Chamber of Commerce. He's normally here, so I hope everything's well with Hal.
Well, I saw him the other night at the meeting. He said, I'll see you Tuesday night. So I don't know whether he'll be here tomorrow night or not.
Yeah. Okay. We have been informed by the chamber president that due to COVID-19, some of the representatives may be watching live stream to report back to the chamber. Fred, would you do the honors of recognizing our veterans?
We started that this year to recognize all the veterans that are with us in the audience. And we have, in addition to the recognition, we have a Davidson County pin that's got veteran on it that we'd like to give to any of the veterans here that have not received one. If you're a veteran, would you please stand? All right. One, two.
Two.
All right. The rest of you bashful. Have y'all got a pin? You got a pin? All right.
All right.
It's hard to give these things away.
Come on now.
Thank y'all.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate you, sir.
Appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your service.
Please register if you are interested in speaking at public address. Adoption of the agenda. Mr. Fry has asked that a closed session for attorney-client be added to the agenda. He has also asked that acceptance of conveyance of property from the conservation fund for the Yakon River Park be added to the consent agenda as agenda item eight T as in Tom. Mr. Smith has asked that approval to submit application for building reuse grant project craft be. Craft be added as agenda item A U as in Union. Are there any other changes to the agenda?
Motion through the agenda.
A motion.
All of the votes are in. And that motion carries five votes, seven, zero.
Do you have a list there?
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, we have six folks registered to speak tonight.
Okay, Sandy Motley. When you, when you come up, if you would, if you would, um, give your names, so the live streaming can pick up that name, please, please.
I'm Sandy Motley, um, I am the Executive Director of Davidson Medical Ministries, and I live in Denton. On February twenty second, Davidson Medical Ministries marked thirty years of providing health care to the uninsured residents of Davidson County. In two thousand and five, we opened our second site in Thomasville. Two thousand and twelve, we formed, formed a partnership with Contegra Health to add a federally qualified health center to Davidson County for the underinsured. Davidson County continues to be a physician underserved area in primary care, behavioral health, mental health, dental and pharmacy services. In two thousand and twenty-one, Davidson Medical Ministries had thirteen thousand plus provider visits with medical and behavioral health, three thousand dental visits, and a hundred and three thousand thirty day prescriptions filled at low or no cost. We are grateful to our donors and our community partners for their support. We have been blessed to receive our federal FQHC status and funding, we have received state rural health funding over the past years, and this year, since our governor finally signed the budget, we were able to receive, or will receive, three hundred thousand dollars in an allocation in the budget that our state legislators for us were able to get. One hundred thousand of that three hundred thousand will go to the DC Connect project. We have submitted a county grant requesting help to provide the balance of funding needed to launch the DC Connect project, a centralized referral and mentoring program primarily for homeless substance use disorder post-incarceration individuals, along with general population crisis needs and referrals. DC Connect is launching as a program of Davidson Medical Ministries, and we are asking for the county to support our project, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Motley. Frank Leonard?
I'm Frank Leonard, a citizen of Lexington, and also Davidson County.
Ren?
Romans? I didn't think there'd be any Romans here, and Commissioners, good evening, good evening. Uh, thought about calling this Square Roots, cause all the trees are going off to squares just about, but I think a better, uh, title for what I'd like to share would be Square Solutions, and maybe I should put a question marks, cause maybe all the solutions have already been decided upon, and I just don't know about that. Uh... I think being the county seat is a special honor or privilege for any city, uh, in any county of North Carolina, and it really should create a very special relationship between that city, uh, and the county, that, and the duty that everyone be listened to fairly, not just citizens of Lexington, but county citizens as well, when you're the county seat. Of course, we had a little dust-up in twenty twenty, uh, over the county squares, uh, there's one that goes back, I think, to nineteen forty-eight, a former county commissioner, in fact, he was the county manager at the time, uh, real big political campaign, Dewey, Thomas E. Dewey, a Republican, uh, was running against Harry S. Truman, uh, Democrat, nineteen forty-eight. Dewey had run previously against Franklin Roosevelt, I didn't know it, but he had, Roosevelt had four terms, Dewey came closer to anyone, uh, to beating, uh, Franklin Delano Roosevelt, so he was running again, second time, and he was invited here to Lexington, and, uh, the former commissioner has passed away, but story he told me, uh, the Republicans had a plan for him to speak in front of the old courthouse, and, uh, the radio station was gonna be there, and they had everything ready, and all of a sudden, Democrat leadership in Lexington said, you can't do that, this is Lexington, he can't speak here, uh, so it caused a dust-up, and, uh, attorneys were contacted, and, and then it was determined that the county did have a right to, uh, to invite a Republican speaker to come to the county square and speak there in front of the courthouse, and my mother was a nurse for Dr. Redwine, and she, uh, had told me the same story, that she saw Thomas, or Thomas E. Dewey, uh, speak there in front of the courthouse, old courthouse. Um, that being said, I just wanted to address the four squares, uh, downtown, and very happy with one National Square, I call it National Square, American flag and recognition of all our veterans, uh, very pleased with that square, very pleased with that square. Uh, former square adjacent to it, uh, it's kind of been landscaped at this time, uh, but I had a thought, and that's why I wanted to come here and share, you may have already made up your mind, but when I look out there and see that American flag, I thought it would be very nice to have maybe a North Carolina flag.
Three minutes, sir.
Force a lower post, uh, there. Um, if you recall, the federal government, ask yourself, where did the federal government gets his rights from? Got it from the states, folks, from the states, in the Constitution, the states granted so much power to the federal government, been caught quite a.
Thank you, Frank.
Can I, can I, can you give him two more minutes, just to finish up, cause I want to get to my point.
Well, the problem, Frank, if I do that, I'm gonna give everybody else, you know.
One minute?
One minute.
Okay, one minute, okay. Uh, Historical Square, or maybe Historical Times Square, uh, with the big clock, kind of keep that real historical in people's mind, uh, where the, um, county seat is, I thought about County Seat Square, in front of Connor Hinkle, but get back to the state, uh, state flag, you could have the state motto there, to be rather than the scene, uh, you could have the, uh, state toast, here's to the land of the longleaf pine, uh, you could have some dogwoods there, so I thought, National Square, State Square, uh, Historical Times Square, and then County, uh, Seat Square, and kind of get it in everybody's mind, that is the county square there, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Frank.
Thanks for that time.
Okay. Matt Ospal?
Madam Clerk, if he wanted to email that to us, that would be good too, if you could share an email.
Yes, sir, Mr. Leonard, if you'll get that to me, could you email it to me, and I'll share?
Evening Commissioners, uh, Matt Ospal from, uh, Wahlburg, I've been here plenty of times the last couple of months, and wanted to share with you one very specific statistic tonight, um, I came here because I know all you guys are a lot smarter than me, so I'm hoping maybe somebody can explain this to me. Um, by trade, I'm a controller, which means I live in an accounting and finance world, which that's the way kind of God made my mind work, cause two plus two is always four, balance sheet's the greatest thing ever invented, cause if it don't balance, you're in trouble. Um, I've been tracked in, been tracking statistically, a lot of information on the COVID cases here in Davidson County as it relates to other counties, in particular, as it relates to Union County. Now, everybody's all excited, cause we, kids aren't in masks the last week or two, but far as I'm concerned, that doesn't change the fact that we locked them up for over six months and forced them to wear a mask without any parents having any right or say-so in it, and so I think it's time that we take a step back and look, okay, well, did we do any good? We forced masks, in my opinion, illegally and unconstitutionally on our kids, Union County had a strong school board with a backbone and said, no, we're gonna keep it mask optional. I think there were about six other counties that kept it mask optional the entire year, but I know for a fact, Union County never imposed a mask mandate since the first day of school. And so Union County's got a lot more students, so you really have to look at this from a percentage, Union County's got over forty-one thousand students to our seventeen thousand five hundred, and so what I've compiled is, every single week, I have the, uh, positive cases in each county, and so what I did is I took the average of the weekly positive cases as a percent of the total student population. So in Davidson County, we averaged point six nine percent positive cases for our students each week, point six nine, flip that around, and that'll say ninety-nine point three percent of our students were not positive on a weekly basis. Over half the kids that even tested positive didn't even know they had it, but over ninety-nine percent of our kids never tested positive on the average on a weekly basis. So our positivity, uh, rate was point six nine percent, so from Dr. Fauci to Roy Cooper to Joe Biden to the CDC to Mandy Cohen, when she was running Department of Health and Human Services, all I've heard is about how great masks were and how they worked. So if that's the case, Union County should be double or triple that, I mean, it only makes logical sense, right? Their percentage was point four percent, point four percent, almost half of what ours was, and so what I've come here, if a commissioner could explain that to me, I'd love to know how we mandated masks in our schools for six months, and Union County didn't, and yet we had almost twice the number of positive cases. To be exact, on a percentage basis, we had one hundred and seventy-two and a half percent more positive cases in this county than Union County. Folks, I, I'm not done with this, I'm gonna ask you guys again to come to a school board meeting, it's next Monday night, March the seventh, Stoner Thomas, they're gonna try to cram us in that little bitty room again, and I'm sure they'll be disrespectful like they've been all year to us.
Did it, sir?
I would love for one of y'all to come and actually share some stats about this. It is time that these people are held accountable, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Ms. Ospal. Jason Hicks?
Good evening, my name's Jason Hicks, uh, some of what I'm gonna say tonight's gonna be repetitive of what I said on December fourteenth, but I'm gonna get into it, uh, because I think it's important that I repeat it, so that you guys can hopefully hear it and understand, um, so I'll say again, I grew up in Davidson County, however, I've been a resident of High Point for over a decade now, I live in Guilford County limits of High Point, the same Guilford County that Davidson County Sheriff Investigator Shane Hill came to on November eighth, twenty twenty, with the intent to kill a young black man, Fred Cox, Fred Cox should not be dead. According to the twenty twenty census, Davidson County's population is just under, just over ten percent black, we're right at fifty percent of interactions with law enforcement are with black people. Out of a hundred sheriff's offices in North Carolina, Davidson County is rated as twelfth worse, according to police scorecard.org. Since Richie Simmons took all, office, seven people have been shot by the sheriff's office. The county recently settled a civil suit in the murder of Mark Hendrick, who should also not be dead. If any of you would take the time to look at, uh, the sixteen, the nearly sixteen month fight for Fred Cox, you would see a shift away, we've shifted away from justice and into accountability, because we have realized that justice would be Fred still being here with us today, Fred being here to be a father, a son, a grandson, a cousin, or all the possibilities in front of him as an eighteen-year-old young man. With the understanding that justice isn't possible, we're demanding accountability. Accountability would begin with the firing of Michael Shane Hill from the Davidson County Sheriff's Office. If Hill isn't fired, we will, and I promise you, we will disrupt Davidson County, Davidson County will become a uncomfortable place to be, and I don't say that lightly, because this family has suffered through the uncomfortableness of their son, this mother's only child being murdered at the hands of law enforcement. So I ask you, I, I, I nearly, I, as a matter of fact, I don't even want to use the word ask, I demand that you fire Michael Shane Hill, and, and it, I would ask each of you directly, and I, and I would hope that you would be decent enough to give me an answer, will you, will each of you consider doing the right thing in, in seeking the termination of, uh, Michael Shane Hill? That's all I have, but I, I would, I'd like to wait for a response if I could, or would there be a response, rather?
We don't respond to the public address.
Okay, so how can I get a response, uh, Commissioner Sheil?
If you'll call County Manager's Office, and he will tell you exactly what you need to do, or if you want to call us individually during the week, I'll be glad to answer that question, anytime.
Fair enough, sir.
Okay, Paulette Montgomery?
Hi, my name is Paulette Montgomery, I'm a lifelong resident of Guilford County, and I'm here to talk about Fred Cox. When we're asked the question, who is Fred Cox, nobody really wants to know about Fred Cox, they want to know what caused his death. Today, I'm here to tell you exactly who Fred Cox Junior was. Fred was born on July thirteenth, two thousand and two, premature and weighing barely three pounds, he wasn't supposed to live more than three days. After fighting for two and a half months in the hospital, he made it and grew into healthy, healthy toddler with the chubbiest of cheeks. Fred Cox Junior was American as apple pie, he grew up in a middle-class family, he played football, basketball, went to school dances, and was starting to breed dogs. Fred's dog, Roxy, his constant companion, was pregnant with her first litter when he died. He was also a bit of a prankster, there's one story that happened on Thanksgiving Day, he came to the dinner table with his grandma's house gown over his clothes, he was about to mess up his style, he took pride in himself, and that same pride was evident in the very, in the way he lived his very short life. Fred always lit up a room when he walked in, and it appears he handed down that very same gift to his kids, Zaden and Camellia. Fred was a dedicated father and preferred hanging at home with his family instead of outrunning the roads, as his mom said, Fred was a homebody. Fred graduated high school and was planning on enlisting in the Navy to fight for our country, for all of us, until his life and dreams were taken by off-duty Detective Michael Shane Hill. Now, the narrative that is being put out by the Davidson County Sheriff's Department and the Living Water Baptist Church is egregious, at the very least, they have implied Fred was in a gang and had a gun, that is so far from the actual truth. Fred abhorred gangs and the behavior associated with them, did you know neighborhood kids you grew up, who went to school with, that were living that lifestyle? Of course, every high school kid does. He worked tirelessly to get them help, his mother, Tanika, even still has the text messages showing Fred's despair in trying to get his friends off the streets and out of gangs. So to answer the question, what exactly did Fred do to get shot four times in the back? He was born black and raised to be kind and think of others, that's what got Fred killed. Let me explain, Fred was in his car when the shot, shot started, he could have easily driven off and saved himself, but no, he raced to the door of the church to usher other people to safety, he got shot four times in the back, for what? He didn't have a weapon, he was running away from where Michael Shane Hill was standing, hence the four shots to the back. Can someone please make sense of this? There's absolutely no reason for Fred Cox Junior to be dead. Fred would be out of boot camp now, starting his adult life with his children, the kids he loved as much as he loved his mama, her only child. Murderer Michael Shane Hill took a son, a father, a grandson, an uncle, a friend, and a hero, the baby that fought so hard to live, the kid that excelled at anything he tried, the young adult that revered family life over the streets, died a hero, that's who Fred Cox was.
Thank you, Ms. Montgomery. Forgive me if I don't pronounce this correctly, Sala Hadeen, is that correct?
My name is Sala Hadeen, and I want to speak about Fred Cox. We're gonna keep coming back here until y'all put it down correctly, cause God is not pleased with America, no matter what we do, if we don't do right, you know, we can't, you know, do negative and then think we're gonna get a positive outcome out here, I didn't know police could roll from county to county and shooting people and run back, you're out of your district. What if that officer had got killed in High Point, then what would it have been? You just can't just shoot people and then sweep the stuff under the rug, and then y'all in together with High Point, if the D A in High Point can't do their job, they need to step down. Lying to the people so you can get in the office, but have no plans on carrying out any of the objectives of other people, or the desires of other people. You know, they, these people need answers, and they need them fast, not put up. And they need them fast, not put, swept under the rug, or put on the back burner, keep stalling, keep stalling, because y'all ain't got nobody to convict but the police. And I'm gonna say it again, I know the police is in here, you started out being a slave catcher, and you're still a slave catcher. This is wrong, this stuff needs to stop all across America. God is not pleased with America. 'Cause if he was, it would run, it would run right. Would run better. People need to think about, what does God want other than what man wants? That's the problem. Man, he needs to get out of the way, need to sit down somewhere. These families deserve an answer, and they need them fast, and we ain't gonna stop, we gonna keep coming back here. We're gonna keep calling, blowing your ringers off the phone, off the meter. We're gonna keep coming back here until y'all do something, until y'all do right. Charge that officer, he needs some charges on him. It shouldn't matter whether he's the police or not, you shoot somebody, you need to go to jail. You need charges brought on to you ASAP, immediately. No matter whether they are black or white, you need to be convicted, 'cause you was wrong for what you done. And that's all I got to say.
Thank you, Mr. He. Okay, the police public. Okay, we have a resounding request by Brendan Melloway in Conrad Hill Township containing point seven-one plus acres from RA one to HC. I declare the public hearing open. Mr. Crook, would you introduce the application?
Thank you, Chairman Sheil, Commissioners. We do have a public hearing tonight, it is for Brendan Melloway. I'd like to read the legal into the record, briefly describe the application, and then have Ms. Melloway come up and just add to it what she wants to. We have a request by Brendan Melloway to rezone property located in Conrad Hill Township, tax map thirty-four A, lot six, and part of seven, containing point seven-one acre more or less. Said property is located on the west side of South NC Highway one oh nine, approximately three hundred and sixty-two feet north of the Clarksbury Church Road intersection. Rezoning is requested to change from that of RA one, Rural Agricultural District, to that of HC Highway Commercial District. Do we have that? That's okay, we've got a PowerPoint show. Ms. Melloway is wanting to introduce a new zoning district. For those of you familiar with the one oh nine sixty-four interchange, there were J V Trotter's house used to be, the Giddy Quick and Bill's Grill. This is right just south of that. She's wanting to rezone a new HC district to put a car lot in. Going out to this location to post with Cory Hartso, the only residential structure you can see from this site is Ms. Melloway's house. You've got Lowe's flatbed facility on the south side of Clarksbury Church Road, you've got the Kaufman Trailer Wheel Center to directly to the west of this property, you've got food line across the street, and I think there's a mini storage facility over there as well. So at this time, I would ask Ms. Melloway to come up, if she wants to add anything else to, to, to tell you guys anything else, then come on up at this time, Ms. Melloway.
Good evening. I don't know really what else to add to it, just, you know, we would just like that little section rezoned for a small car lot. Maybe just sell a few cars a year, five, seven cars a year.
That's in the yellow, right?
It is, yes, sir, it's this, it's this feature right here. The reason for the, the reason for the weird shape is Ms. Melloway wants to utilize her existing drive out on the Clarksbury Church Road for this facility. She actually has access both here, this is the Giddy Quick and Bill's Grill, and traditionally, there used to be a boat sales facility here. And all three of those businesses utilize this one access, because one oh nine's a limited access NC DOT facility. Mr. Trotter lived in this house and owned these, these properties, so there's a drive that connects that right there. Ms. Melloway wishes to utilize Clarksbury Church Road for her customer base for this little, small used car lot, that, and I've been in this twenty-eight years, and at the Institute of Government, they always tell us that the driveway's part of the use, just like the septic tank system's part of the use, just like the building's part of the use. So we wanted to get the driveway zoned highway commercial, just like the, the ground that, where the cars are gonna be setting.
What's that lot there on one oh nine beside of this?
Right here.
No, beside of it here, that one.
Behind it there.
Right there.
Right here.
Maybe I'm mean by it.
Ms. Melloway owns that property, her lot, her property extends all the way over here to the Kaufman Trailer Facility. She owns this entire corner.
But there where Buford's house is, then the lot right there to the right of that, what is that?
This.
Not to the right, not up.
This right here.
There.
That's, I'm sorry, that's NC DOT right-of-way.
Okay.
Uh, one oh nine has an extremely wide right-of-way here, they, they go from here to here. So that's part of the one oh nine.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question?
Um, the, the little sliver that's to the right of the property, is that Bill's Grill right there?
This little piece right here?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am, it is. This property is split-zoned. Giddy Quick's right here, Bill's Grill is on this side, and this, that facility predates zoning in the southern part of Davidson County, which was done in May eleventh of nineteen ninety. This, we consider this as a legal non-conforming use, because you've got a parking facility here, some dumpsters, and actually Bill's Grill is on that RA one section. The Giddy Quick is over here with the gas pumps, that's all right there in the HC. So while it's zoned RA one, it technically probably should be highway commercial, but it's grandfathered in legal non-conforming, as far as we're concerned, because it's been used for the same thing for all these years.
Anybody have any more, any more other questions?
I don't see any issue with it.
Is there any, anyone in the audience who wishes to speak either in favor of or in opposition to the request? Seeing none. Mr. Crook, what is the staff recommendation for this request?
Well, I've tendered it as part of the, as y'all's application. Briefly, the land, the land development plan recognizes sixty-four one oh nine interchange as an industrial or commercial center. It also recognizes NC Highway one oh nine as a, as a growth corridor. The character of the property, while it's not contiguous to HC, you've got HC all the way around it with LI. Staff would recommend that you approve the request and adopt the statement of consistency.
Okay. Any further questions on the board? If not, I declare the public hearing closed. They have a motion and second to either approve or deny. Bishop, yes, did you have anything you wanted to add?
I'm good.
Okay. They have a motion, second to either approve or deny the rezoning request and to adopt the resolution on statement of consistency.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion by Mr. Short.
Permission, Commissioner Short?
Yeah.
Question to approve.
Fred's second.
Fred's second. Cast your vote.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Ms. Melloway. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, are there any items to remove from the consent agenda for discussion? Not may have a motion, second to approve consent agenda?
So moved, second.
Please cast your vote.
All of the votes are in. And that motion carries by those seven zero.
Okay. Going to deliberation, got a proclamation, developmental disability awareness month. Mr. Elliott, if you mind reading that, make a presentation.
Thank you, sir. It's an extreme honor, Mr. Chairman, for you to allow me to read this. My son has developmental disabilities, and it is just an honor for me to be able to read this on behalf of the, the board and the Honorable Mr. Chairman. Proclamation Developmental Disability Awareness Month, March two thousand and twenty-two. Whereas, the month of March two thousand and twenty-two has been designated as Developmental Disability Awareness Month, to celebrate and recognize people with developmental disabilities. And whereas, disability is a natural part of the human experience, and in no way diminishes the right of individuals, of individuals with developmental disabilities to live independently, enjoy self-determination, make choices, contribute to society, and experience fully in the economic, political, social, cultural, and educational mainstream of American society. And whereas, family members, friends, and members of the community can play a central role in enhancing the lives of people with developmental disabilities, especially when the family and the community are provided with the necessary support services, and public and private employers are aware of the capabilities of people with developmental disabilities to be engaged in competitive work in inclusive settings. And whereas, the goals of this community include providing individuals with developmental disabilities the opportunities and support to make informed choices and decisions, to live in homes and communities where individuals can exercise their full rights and responsibilities as citizens, pursue meaningful and productive lives, contribute to their family, community, state, and nation, and have interdependent friendships and relationships with others, and achieve full inclusion in society. Now, therefore, the Davidson County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim the month of March two thousand and twenty-two as Developmental Disability Awareness Month in Davidson County, North Carolina, and we urge all the citizens to call this observance to the attention of all of our citizens adopted this twenty-eighth day of February two thousand and twenty-two.
Do I take it as a motion, Commissioner Elliott?
Yes, sir.
To approve?
Second.
Got a second, Commissioner James Short, cast your vote.
All of the votes are in. And that motion carries by those seven zero.
Teresa McCoyn, if I pronounced that right, and Cara Cody, if y'all come up, if you would...
Take a picture with the chairman. Thank you, sir. Just standing behind you.
Thank y'all so much. Anything you wanna say before we make this?
Oh, you know. Thank you, Commissioners, I'd like to introduce Tevin Barnes, Melody Snow, Teresa Morgan, one of our wonderful direct support professionals, and, yes, and on behalf of the close to seventeen hundred individuals who live in Davidson County with a developmental disability, it's always a pleasure to come before you and be one of the least controversial votes you'll have to make this season. So thank you so much for everything that you do for all the citizens of Davidson County, regardless of disability.
Thank you.
Thank y'all for being here.
Thank you.
I appreciate everything y'all done, and hold it, all, all things that you can have to do, being a lot of our disabilities and none of those things, y'all. I appreciate everything y'all done, sir. I appreciate, thank you.
Thank you.
On behalf of the workshop of Davidson, we also wanna give you our thanks for all of the continued support, for all of the fine people that we have the privilege to serve every day.
Now get your picture taken. Yeah.
And the families gotta be together.
Good man.
Yes, that'll be perfect. And then we can just give you the proclamation.
One, two, three. Couple more, one, two, three. One, two. Thank you.
Good job. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I don't believe it's a good... It's here. It was, right, right, okay. Thank you, Mr. Elliott. Mr. Chairman. Okay, we'll see. We have proclamation for the two thousand and twenty-two March for Meals recognition of fiftieth anniversary of the Older Americans Nutrition Program, and I'm gonna ask Commissioner McClure if he would read this, please.
Sure. The proclamation of March two thousand and twenty-two as a month celebrating the fiftieth anniversary of the Older Americans Act Nutrition Program. Whereas, fifty years ago, on March the twenty-second, nineteen seventy-two, President Nixon signed into law a measure that amended the Older Americans Act of nineteen sixty-five to include a national nutrition program for individuals sixty years and older. And whereas, for five decades, this landmark law has helped to fund community-based organizations like Meals on Wheels, and it is still the only federal program designed specifically to meet the nutritional, nutritional and social needs of older adults. And whereas, this year, Meals on Wheels programs from across the country are joining together for the March for Meals Awareness Campaign to celebrate fifty years of success and garner the support needed to ensure these critical programs can continue to address food insecurity and malnutrition, combat social isolation, enable independence, and improve health for years to come. And whereas, Meals on Wheels programs, both congregate and home-delivered, in Davidson County, have served our communities admirably for nearly forty years. And whereas, volunteers for Meals on Wheels programs in Davidson County are the backbone of the program, and they not only deliver nutritious meals to seniors and individuals with disabilities who are at significant risk of hunger and isolation, but also carry concern and attention to their welfare. And whereas, Meals on Wheels program in Davidson County provide nutritious meals to seniors throughout the county that help them maintain their health and independence, thereby helping to prevent unnecessary falls, hospitalizations, and/or premature institu- institutionalization, there you go, being in an institute. Whereas, Meals on Wheels programs in Davidson County provide a powerful opportunity for social connection for millions of seniors to help combat the negative health effects and economic consequences of loneliness and isolation. And whereas, Meals on Wheels programs in Davidson County deserve recognition for the heroic contributions and essential services they have provided amid the COVID-nineteen pandemic, will continue to provide to local communities, our state, and our nation long after it's over. And whereas, the senior population is increasingly substantially, and action is needed now to support local Meals on Wheels programs through federal, state, and local funding, volunteering, donations, and raising awareness to ensure these vital services can continue to be delivered for another fifty years. Now, therefore, we as the Davidson County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim March two thousand and twenty-two as a month celebrating the fiftieth anniversary of the Older Americans Act Nutrition Program, and urge every community member to take this month to honor our Meals on Wheels programs, the seniors they serve, and the volunteers who care for them. Our recognition of and involvement in the national celebration can enrich our entire community and help combat senior hunger and isolation in America, adopted this twenty-eighth day of February two thousand and twenty-two. I make a motion that we accept this proclamation.
We got a second with Commissioner Trow. Cast your vote. I thought it pretty long. Tisha Roberts.
I apologize for butchering institutionalization. I still can't say it.
And that motion carries by those seven zero.
Next time you want proclamation, don't put words like that in. Let's see.
I'm gonna let you get a little closer this time, I'm gonna get back here with you.
Come on, bud. When Meals on Wheels...
Just wanna look at him a little, yeah.
When Meals on Wheels...
One, two, three. One, two, three.
Appreciate it. Good job. Thank you, too. Oh, yeah.
Okay. As point of, uh, just a one quick little story, Mr. Chairman, um, I've heard, uh, Commissioner Watford talk about her delivering meals to citizens in our community, and there was one in particular, uh, person that, uh, she struck a relationship up with, and those sort, the, the stories that she shared were so sweet. It just shows how much not only does, does that affect the people in our community, but it affects the people that deliver those meals, so, thank you.
Okay.
I delivered a meal to some folks out there, and the guy said, uh, he'd rather have a hot dog. So, I went down, got him a hot dog, and took it back to him.
Oh, that's good. Okay. Request to add nutritionist to WIC, state-funded. Ms. Smith, will you please take?
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna actually call Lillian up for the next two items, really. They're both items of receiving additional state funds to, uh, add staff in key areas. Um, since it's adding staff, that's how we've moved them to deliberation here this evening, but she's, she's got more of the details as far as, one of them, I think, is just for the fiscal year, and the other one extends to possibly beyond.
Good evening. I wish I was back up here for another award. That was way more fun. But this is actually a good thing, too, y'all, and it, uh, dovetails perfectly on top of Meals on Wheels, talking about nutrition. The WIC program is a division of the Public Health Department that has zero county dollars in it. Um, due to utilization over the past year, more individuals are now eligible for WIC, so they have increased the amount of money they're giving all the counties. I met with our WIC Director, Brian Matthews. He stated the best use of these dollars would be to hire another nutritionist. These nutritionists engage with pregnant mothers and children up to the age of four to help them understand more about healthy eating and then provide benefits for them so that they can get healthy foods.
Do this, if this individual you're talking about, do they direct these folks to the proper source to, in order to obtain these benefits?
Yes, sir. I talked with them about the grocery stores that have the things, um, available they need. Occasionally, there's some prescription formula that they help them get, um, with, through their doctor's office and things like that, but that's part of the process, yes, sir.
Okay.
How long is this position funded for?
Um, they give us an AA every year, an agreement agenda, and this year's the funding for this. Um, we don't expect to see cuts next year. It's probably going to stay at this rate, but it's a federally funded program, Commissioner Yates.
Sure.
And all of its pass-through money is none-
Yes, sir. Essentially, at the end of the budget year, we look at our books, and if we didn't spend any of the funds, they revert back to the federal government. These are not, uh, county dollars that stay once we appropriate them.
Most, most approved. And if there's no further discussion, we've got a motion by Commissioner Trow, and a second by Commissioner Elliott. Please cast your vote.
All of the votes are in. And that motion carries five oh seven zero.
Okay. Uh, we got a public, okay, let me just stay right where you at here. Request to add three social worker twos for mental health support in schools. Ms. Smith?
This was the bigger grant of the two, so this is for the, very similar to what we were talking about with Medicaid funds from Sand Hills, but I'm feeling can help with the details.
So, I'm here again, different hat, state funding for COVID relief. This is a one-year set of money, um, and I have talked with all three of our school systems. Um, we had a few options with these dollars. We could do a school nurse, we could do mental health services, a social worker. So, in conversation with the schools, we feel like school nursing, we've got, uh, we've got that, but we all know that the children have really experienced a rough couple of years. So, our hope is that we can hire three social workers for the term of a year to work with our three school systems to augment programs that they already have. Um, when I talked with the superintendents, um, I used a term that Mary Lou Collett taught me. She calls it a worker bee. And these social workers would actually be worker bees at the direction of the school system. They would engage with children that need a little bit more help, and then they would help those children get back in touch with either the guidance counselors or school personnel that are on site, kind of say, met with the student, this is what I found out, this is the kind of help they need, and they will carry that forward.
When will these positions be, uh, put in place, because this school year's about ends?
Correct. Wonderful question. So, this was, um, one of those things, we received the AA at a weird time, the, the agreement agenda, the dollars will carry through next fiscal year. So, to be most responsible based on the school calendar, if y'all approve this tonight, we'll get our ducks in a row, and we'll post the positions so that they start just a little bit before the school s- year, um, starts, so that they can work in conjunction with the calendar year with the school. They won't just come and start at the county and just sit and do nothing. Well, they'll need to start a little early to make sure that they can figure out where they're going and all those things, but, um, we won't be expecting to hire until the end of July, beginning of August.
May I ask, um, will they, uh, will they be mobile? Will they move from school to school?
These individuals will be hired by the Health Department, but work at the direction of the schools, so wherever they see the needs, that will be how it works.
Okay.
But will they go through you to put these people at certain schools, or?
So, we, I met with them, and, um, we looked at the, we, y'all know, have three school systems, um, and so, but there, while we have three, there's a very different population. So, the county schools have about seventy-five percent of the students. So, the way, um, that I approach the school systems, and they seem good with it, two of these positions would work at the discretion of the county schools, and one of the positions would work between, um, Lexington and Thomasville.
Okay. One, one other question, and Casey, you may, with what we're looking to do with the assessments inside the schools, would you be working with those people doing the assessments? Why not?
This is related to COVID, and it's very tricky.
Well, COVID's gonna be gone. What are we gonna do next year?
Well, okay, so, next year, you're right, but the, uh, those assessments are different. Uh, um, let me not speak on what I don't know about that. What I can tell you is that these funds are to help children who have experienced trials and tribulations related to COVID. So, Commissioner Shell, that is a broad stroke, I'm sure. Any children that are having any sort of behavioral issues or mental health issues or struggling at the school could most likely be somehow attributed to COVID. The assessments, I think, are, to my understanding, are more formalized.
Right, and more long-term, um, just whatever the right term is, um, chronic.
It's just another example of the state telling you what we need in this county, and nobody knows what we need in this county better than we know what we need in this county. And if you're, if you're going to do mental health, you're going to do mental health. It's not going to be, I'm not worrying with you because you're not COVID-related. How silly is that, really?
I don't understand the assessment program, but perhaps maybe a way to describe it is if these, this hired individual determines that the child needs a little bit more help, they could say, hey, I think y'all need to do an assessment on this child. That is, I would think, very much in the realm of what needs to be done. I just don't think that these social workers could do those particular assessments.
But they could carry on and get these assessments.
They could pass the information.
Yes, sir. Oh, yes, sir, absolutely.
They'd about have to, you know, because you just couldn't stop and go, well, you know.
Fashionally, yeah.
Yeah, coordination of care is the way that they describe that.
And I think that's the point I was trying to get to.
I'm sorry I missed that.
Because it, you know, we work with DSS and the schools, and-
Mm-hmm. We expect this to last just, just one school year, then?
That's all the funding we have, yes, sir.
So, they would know these three positions would be-
Temporary.
Yes, they know that, and that's, again, why we want to really augment the services that they already have, because we don't really have time to stand up something new. So, we need those people, like I said, the worker bees, for a guidance counselor or social worker that's already in the school, but just doesn't have enough time to see all the students that they have, this person can hopefully take off some of their caseload and then get those kids directed to the care that they need.
And so, I guess my point was, when you're limited to COVID, you're setting them people up for failure. A- and, and we got so many issues out there with regards to mental illness. We got babies born addicted. You know, they grow up and their mental illness gets worse and worse and worse, and I want folks in place that can spot that and get them to the right, the right people.
Yes, sir. Big picture, absolutely, which is, um, part of the reason why we chose not to do it with school nurses, because, um, social workers, even though we're under the umbrella of COVID, much broader stroke for needed student services in Davidson County.
All right. Make a motion if you- Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner-
I'll second it.
Trow, unless you guys-
I'm going to approve these three grant-funded, time-limited social work positions, except the appropriate funds awarded through AA six-twenty.
Second.
As noted on- Whatever he said, I second it.
You guys second my first two.
I've already voted.
Oh.
I've already voted.
All right. Cast your vote.
Well, I talk slow.
All of the votes are in. And that motion carries five oh seven zero.
I knew what you were going to say.
Yes, sir.
Now that I've attacked COVID, because I wanted to get it out of my system, but I think it'll give us a good opportunity now to sort of evaluate what these positions actually do.
Right.
And, and maybe expand that to interact with their assessments, you know, from DSS and the schools.
Right.
Down the road, uh-
With everything with the state, there's all kinds of reporting and things like that, so at the end of this t- term year of this position, we should have a pretty good handle on what they were able to do, what kind of assessments they got these kids into, what other services that they were able to push towards these children, so I have high hopes. I mean, this is, for your health, the writer, this is the most, um, untied COVID dollars that we've gotten, so there's a little bit more latitude than a lot of the other things that we've gotten to provide services for kids, so that's really great.
Thank you, Lillie.
Thank y'all. Y'all have a great evening.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, now, a motion to go into closed session.
Say it.
We can do this verbally, sir.
All right, well, um-
Whatever he said, I second it.
You got seconded.
I've already got it.
Oh.
I've already voted.
All right.
Cast your vote. Well, I talk slow.
All of the votes are in. And then motion carries five votes.
Now, now.
I knew what you were going.
Lily.
Yes sir.
Now that I've attacked COVID, because I wanted to get it out of my system, but I think it will give us a good opportunity now to sort of evaluate what these positions actually do.
Right.
And, and maybe expand that to interact with their assessments, you know, from DSS and the schools down the road.
With everything with this state, there's all kinds of reporting and things like that. So at the end of this term year of this position, we should have a pretty good handle on what they were able to do, what kind of assessments they got these kids into, what other services that they were able to push towards these children. So I have high hopes. I mean, this is for your health, the writer, this is the most um, untied COVID dollars that we've gotten. So there's a little bit more latitude than a lot of the other things that we've gotten to provide services for kids. So that's really great.
Thank you, Lily.
Thank y'all. Y'all have a great evening.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, a motion to go into closed session.
Say it.
We can use verbally, sir.
All right.
Uh.